It's now about 5:30. As we do all meetings, we start off with an invocation followed by the pledges of allegiance. I'd like to ask Pete Sepulveda to lead us in the two pledges, okay? Invocation by Gregory Fish. Hi Greg, how you doing?
Hi.
Central Christian Church.
Let's pray. Lord God, I ask that you would give guidance and a cooperative spirit to everybody involved in this meeting and that all that is said and done would be for the good of this entire county. And most of all, Lord, I ask that you would be glorified through this meeting. And I pray this in Jesus' name. Amen.
Amen. Thank you. Pete?
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Honor the Texas flag. I pledge allegiance to thee, Texas, one state under God, one and indivisible.
Thank you Pete. We have one person that signed up for public comment. Is that Mr. Robert Martinez?
My name is Robert Martinez. I come twenty-three month ten. I come talk for Laguna Heights, the street, to open more streets in the Bay of Laguna Heights. I come to hear our news, what answer you having to for the street, the pipe. Remember, we talk for Laguna Heights?
Yes, sir. You were here, I think, last week or week before and you expressed your concerns.
Uh, having that question too. We need more unit there in the high. We having too much burglaries, too much breaking into property. I don't know how going on with the constable there. We can't do my burglaries, nobody do nothing but.
We can certainly ask the constable to step up patrols in the sheriff's office, to step up patrols in the Laguna Heights area for you. As far as the, as far as the streets, as we, as we told you last week, that we have a lot of areas, in the rural areas, that have the same challenges that, that your neighborhood has. You know, we don't have the money to, to try to do all that we can do. All I can tell you is that we will try to incorporate that in the, in this budget, in the future budgets, just take them one, one project at a time.
Next question is, when Mike Marana there, constable, we no have no more burglaries. Where everybody would work together to him? The constable no want to work together to us? You want to do? I don't know what was going on.
Well, maybe we can, we can help the, the constable set up a, a neighborhood watch program for you in the Laguna Heights area. I will contact them and if you'd like to, to give either Mr. Sepulveda or Mr. Garcia your phone number, so if we, if we contact the constable's office, we will have him contact you, maybe you can help organize a, a neighborhood watch. Would that be okay?
Yeah, no, I'm saying, we having too much burglaries, we having too much breaking into property, house, business, everything. So, what we need to, what we, the people there in the high, we want sheriff, patrol there.
Okay.
The constable can do it, send sheriff inside twenty-four hours, Laguna Heights.
Okay. If you could, if you could give Mr. Garcia your phone number and then we will contact Constable Ochoa and, and the sheriff's office and maybe y'all can get together and, and form a, a watch group. Is that all right?
Okay. Uh, uh, the question is for the street, why you think to open more, open more?
Yeah, I, I can't answer that. We have, we have a lot of projects that we're looking at and that's, that's certainly one of them, but I can't tell you today that we're gonna start next month or three months from now. It just depends on what the budget looks like and, and you know, stuff like that. But we will keep you in mind.
Yeah, we need to, you know, to help the people.
I understand.
You know, first too much burglaries, too much breaking into, too much people be hurt in Laguna Heights, no constable, no, no.
You know, once, once, once we get the lights installed, if that ever happens the way we think, we hope it's happened Laguna Heights, that, that may eliminate a lot of the burglaries at night that you're, that you're having.
Yeah, every night, every.
Yeah, I understand.
When Mike get out, the constable, the burglaries start to do it.
I understand.
When Mike there, I'm gonna tell you this too, when Mike there, I'll be working for Mike, get burglaries, get everything, breaking into, get people. The constable no want to work to people. You know, he not right.
Yes, sir. I understand.
You can do, leave the house alone, the Friday, the football game, everybody left the football game, later, when he come to football game, the house be skinny.
Yes, sir. We understand. Okay.
Well, we want to do, do something, work together, put constable, put sheriff there, or put somebody there, patrol there twenty-four hours, or do something.
Okay. Well, we will, we will contact the constable's office and have them coordinate that, David, with Constable Ochoa and maybe some of the sheriff's office and see if they can do that.
Uh, the question, people call me, you know, I be working for people, carnies, every carny around, work for, constable, the constable no want to work to us, together. I say, you no want to work? I need to do something, somebody work to me, get the burglaries out the street, get the people out the street, breaking into property, doing bad, hey, he not right, you know?
I understand, sir.
You know, people work, seven things, house, you know, people come stealing, breaking into cars, breaking into, he not right. I'm not, I'm anything right there.
I think we all agree.
The thing, I did a constable patrol there, one a week. I see a court around there twenty-four hours, one a week.
Okay. Well, we'll see what we can do. We'll put you in contact with the constable.
No, patrol there more, more, working for him, for constable more. I see every night, I don't see no more constable around there.
Okay. We'll do all that we can.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Anybody else wish to make public comment that did not have the opportunity to sign up? Item two, consideration, adoption of a resolution in support of the concept of a regional convention event center in Cameron County, Texas. Commissioners, you have in your packet a, a sample resolution and the way this came about is in speaking with the, the leadership in city of Brownsville, San Benito and Harlingen, and we hope to include all, all the municipalities. The, the thought of, of developing a, a conceptual plan to have a regional events convention center. And I realize it's late in the process, McAllen's already got theirs and, but it's better, better late than never. If you had the opportunity to read the resolution, it's, it's basically the commissioner's court, this is the first step in trying to get support from the other municipalities and, and governmental entities throughout the county. And again, we have three obstacles that we need, that, that we're challenged with. One of those, obviously, is how we're gonna pay for this. Secondly, the, the location where it's gonna be. And thirdly, the, the management of it. This resolution is simply acknowledging to the other municipalities that conceptually this court supports the, the, the concept of a regional approach versus a city trying to do it on their own or, thank you, Mr. Martinez, or any city trying to do it on their own. So, I put this before you, if, if y'all believe that, that it's in the county's best interest to work towards a regional type event center, convention center, then this would be the first step. The cities, I believe, are waiting for us to take this first step. And with that, they, then we can start dialogue with them to, to, in passing a similar type resolution and get the ball rolling with this. If the court does not want to do this, this concept, you know, that's, that's fine too. But I think that we need to, to at least start the, start the process and I believe that the cities will, will also entertain this. So, with that, I hope to answer any questions that y'all might have. This is a non-binding resolution, it's just in support of, of the, of the concept of a regional convention center. So, with that, I'd like to entertain any questions at this time. I'll answer everything that I can. So, whatever y'all want to do.
Obviously Judge, this is something that isn't, isn't really new, although I think it's moved ahead considerably. I appreciate whatever work you've done on it to get it to this point because it is an issue that I believe would be beneficial to the entire county. And I think it would be important for all the communities in incorporated areas in the county to participate in it. As you said, it's one of those things, it's gonna be expensive, it's gonna cost a lot of money. It can be put together, it can be operated, as long as we operate as a group and get it together. That's the important part and I, I certainly think that this is a good move in the right direction to get us going that way. We do need a venue that can provide the type of entertainment and the type of programs that we all enjoy going to and participating in from time to time. This could do that.
Which one is?
Judge, I think this is another, one of those items that we need to face as a region. I know our transportation projects, we're trying to develop them, you know, as a whole, getting all the entities involved. And so, I certainly know that this would be a good idea to bring forward.
Commissioners.
I know that last year, year before last, I guess it was, there was some discussion in Harlingen trying to develop this concept. And it's, I agree with all of you in saying that it has to be a regional approach. One city cannot do it alone and the county can't do it alone. It's gonna be really important that all the cities that you mentioned will come on board and with an open mind, as well as the county. I, I truly believe, Judge, that it'll work if everybody stays united and focused on making it a success and, and not worry about my turf or your turf. Again, I think we have been working a lot of projects in that manner, with a regional approach, and that's the only way it's going to work. So, I definitely support it and it's, but it's time, I'll be more than glad to make the motion, that we go ahead and show our support in, in, by adopting this resolution. I would be interested in knowing, Judge, I know you've met, did it, does it look like they're all going to be passing resolutions?
The, we've met once and again, I think they're, they're waiting for us to, to take the lead in terms of, of putting, putting together a, a concept. And you're right, this has been talked about for a long, long time. It was always, well, we want it in our backyard and, and I think we, we need to quit thinking parochially. This is no different than we got together with, with the other county judges in South Texas when it came to, to promoting a, a veterans hospital. The reason that the veterans hospital issue has, has come so far is because nobody was fighting for it to be in their backyard. And the concept that the other county judges and I talked about numerous times was, you know, let's not worry about where it's gonna be, let's just get it down here. Then we'll, you know, we'll, we will worry about where it's gonna be at, at a later point. So, this is, this is the same concept and then to, and to dovetail on what Commissioner Wood said, everybody needs to be participating in this, not only, not only the municipalities, but I've already, already have some letters drafted that are gonna go out to every governmental entity, school districts, irrigation districts, drainage districts, utility companies, university. Not necessarily for them to pony up money, but for them to be in supportive of this concept because if, depending on how all this pans out, we may have to go out and float some kind of, every community may have to go out and float some bond deals to help, you know.
Make it happen.
Pay for the, for the infrastructure. And it, it's always good to bring everybody on board. But I think obviously, this is, this is the, the first step. The next step is obviously trying to figure out how we're gonna pay for it. And everyone's got different thoughts, whether it's a regional hotel motel tax, whether it's, it's, you know, revenue, revenue bonds, whatever. I mean, that, we, we're, we're a ways to go before we get to that. Right now, this is just a concept that I think it's important that we, that we take that step. So, let everybody know, hey, the county connect as a conduit or an umbrella over all the municipalities. And speaking to Brownsville, Harlingen, they appear to be of the sense, it doesn't matter to them really where it's gonna be. Obviously, they're, they have some thoughts, but I think as part of this process, we hire a, a consultant to, to do a study, a feasibility study, and tell us where the best location is gonna be. And then rely on that, on their expertise. So, really, this is the first step and we have a long ways to go before we break ground. But I think we, we have to take this initial step in order for this thing to, to be somewhat successful. Commissioners?
I, I would be very supportive of this. I know I've had some discussions with some of the leaders that you've mentioned and it's very evident that the concept, even as it was done in Hidalgo, the city of Hidalgo, has worked well for them, you know? And, and that's a city-owned or city-sponsored project. The venues, the, the use and the utilization of the facility has been, you know, great. You know, they just keep constantly having events and being able to draw the people there. And if you visit that venue, you see a whole lot of people from this area that frequent, you know, the Dodge Arena. And if you run into them, they'll say, you know, when are we gonna get something like that in, in that neck of the woods? I don't know if any of us, any of you have visited the Laredo Arena, the one in Laredo, which is a similar concept also, and it works well. There's a number of counties, I mean, Bay Area County went into a partnership with the Spurs, I believe, to develop the AT&amp;T Arena. You know, there's different funding mechanisms. I think the main thing that we have to do is to make sure that we keep all options open for all of us and see how we can least put a burden on our local taxpayers and utilize either the hotel taxes or the revenue taxes of some sort with the events to fund part of this. So, we need to just keep, keep our minds open in regards to possibilities as to how we can fund this. But I think the regional concept is great. I think the EDCs from all the cities need to be, you know, also brought on board.
All be getting correspondence.
You know, that way that they're, they're the economic engines for each locale and it'd be nice to have a project where all of them would work together for the region instead of, you know, fighting turf. If it's gonna be on this side of this road, on the other side of what city limit or whatever, you know, so. Yeah.
Judge, no, and, and time goes by real quick and I'm getting older as it goes by. It seems to me like probably ten years ago, maybe it was eight years ago, somewhere probably closer to ten years ago, I recall when I was on the city commission, the state legislature had lots of issues about large arenas and large venues and how could they be funded? How could they be paid for? Or how could entities and local entities figure out some way to pay for these types of facilities? And legislation was passed, in fact, specifically for Cameron County. If there's a hotel or a motel in the county, not inside an incorporated city, the county has the ability to assess a hotel motel tax, just like the cities do inside the city. However, for Cameron County, the way I believe it was structured and is still on the books that way, whatever monies we would assess would be used for a venue like this. We can't do what cities can do with their money, which is a, you know, do whatever type of advertising or, or other stuff that cities do, heads and beds type promotion of things. They would have to go towards something like this. In addition to that, there was legislation passed to allow an additional tax being placed on rental cars because the theory was rental cars are basically used by people from outside the area, generally. Obviously, there are exceptions to that. We all, from time to time, have a rental car need sometimes, but this would be another way to raise funding. And I know that in some areas of the state, in some counties, that rental car tax or paying for these types of, of venues is in place and is working. It sometimes makes it a little expensive to rent cars when you go over there, but they need those types of revenues to pay for the venues that you, as a visitor, oftentimes are participating in. So, there, there's some ways to do it. And maybe we need to become inventive and create some more ways and get the legislation to pass those. I testified several times during that legislative session in favor of those types of, of issues.
Well, the, the funding will be challenging, but you know, we've got some time to, to begin that process, so.
Well, our area's growing and, and definitely we need something like that in, in our region. And, and I'm glad, Judge, that, that the first step has been taken to, y'all are united. You've met, obviously, with, with the leadership in the other cities and so on. And I would at this time like to make a motion to adopt the resolution in support of the concept of a regional convention event center in Cameron County.
Second. Yeah, that's the motion by Commissioner Tomayo, second by Commissioner Benavides and Commissioner Wood and Commissioner Gadsden.
One more comment.
Okay. John, put this discussion.
It's good, it's good to get older as time goes by because the alternative is pretty final. I guess you're right. Yeah.
I just love all this philosophy. Okay. We have a motion, a second, all those in favor, any further discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Item carries. Consent and travel items, are there any items under consent or travel that any member of the court wish to take out separately and discuss?
Judge and Commissioners, just to advise the court on item number twenty-seven, the court has the authority to award the bid to the local vendor that is within the three percent of the low bid. So, we can either pull the item or that can be part of the motion.
I think you're, you're making the recommendation, right?
Yes.
I don't have any problem leaving it as part of the motion.
The recommendation, I want to be sure and understand, the recommendation is to the local bidder.
That's correct.
Because he is within three percent.
That's correct.
Three percent of the low bid.
That's correct.
And then item twenty-eight B, you can table that.
So, we don't have to pull it out? We'll just include it?
That's the recommendation. Okay. So, if I have a motion to approve consent items three through twenty-seven and travel items twenty-eight A through twenty-eight G, with the exception of item B, which will be tabled, and item seventeen, I will abstain on that specific one. And everything else, do I hear?
I will be abstaining on fourteen.
Okay. Commissioner Tomayo will abstain on item fourteen?
I move to approve all the items as presented.
Second.
With the condition set forth.
Move by Commissioner Gadsden, second by Commissioner Wood, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Item carries. Please note Commissioner Tomayo's abstention on number fourteen, having to do with Red River Service Corporation, and item seventeen, having to do with the contract for legal, legal services with Philip Cowan. And item, travel item twenty-eight B was tabled. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Item carries. Do I hear a motion to go into executive session?
So moved.
Move by Commissioner Tomayo, second by Commissioner Gadsden, to discuss the following items. Item A, confer with Commissioner's Court Legal Counsel concerning issues relating to possible acquisition of lots one A and one B, block one twenty-two, Brownsville original town site pursuant to code section five-five-one point zero-seven-two. Item B, deliberation regarding real property concerning right-of-way for Florida de Mayo Bridge pursuant to government code section five-five-one point zero-seven-two. Item C, deliberation regarding real property concerning acquisition of parcel one for right-of-way for the West Rail Project pursuant to code section five-five-one point zero-seven-two. Item D, deliberation regarding real property concerning the possible lease of land at East La Blanca Park pursuant to code section five-five-one point zero-seven-two. Item E, confer with Commissioner's Court Legal Counsel concerning a claim of Timothy R. Floyd for discussion and possible settlement pursuant to code section five-five-one point zero-seven-one, one A and B. Item F, confer with Commissioner's Court Legal Counsel concerning Sun Guard BiTech Software Support Bill on a matter in which the duty of the attorney to the governmental body under the Texas disciplinary rules of professional conduct of the State Bar of Texas clearly conflicts with this chapter pursuant to code section five-five-one point zero-seven-one, A and two. Lastly, item G, confer with Commissioner's Court Legal Counsel concerning Attorney General Opinion Number GA-0578 and concerning possible declaratory judgment action with regard to the creation of funding of the four forty-fourth and four forty-fifth judicial courts on a matter in which the duty of the attorney to the governmental body under the Texas disciplinary rules of professional conduct of the State Bar of Texas clearly conflicts with this chapter pursuant to code section five-five-one point zero-seven-one, one A. On the supplemental agenda, the executive, executive session item confer with Cameron County District Attorney regarding the release of confidential information to third parties by email on a matter in which the duty of the attorney to the governmental body under the Texas disciplinary rules of professional conduct of the State Bar of Texas clearly conflicts with this chapter pursuant to code section five-five-one point zero-seven-one, one A and two. Agenda? Substantial agenda, confer with Commissioner's with Cameron County DA regarding the release of confidential information to third parties by email. Do I hear a motion to acknowledge report by our DA?
So moved.
Move by Commissioner Wood, second by Commissioner Tomayo. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Item carries. Item A, confer, another item A, confer with Commissioner's Court Legal Counsel concerning issue relating to possible acquisition of lots one A and one B, block one, one twenty-two. Do I hear motion to acknowledge report of counsel?
So moved.
Move by Commissioner Tomayo, second by Commissioner Gadsden. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Item carries. Item B, deliberation regarding real property concerning right-of-way for Florida de Mayo Bridge. Same thing Pete, acknowledge report of, of our county administrator?
So moved.
Second.
On the floor, on B.
And proceed.
And proceed along the terms and conditions to discuss in executive session. Move by Commissioner Gadsden, second by?
Second.
By Commissioner Wood, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Item carries. Item C, deliberation regarding real property concerning acquisition of parcel one for the right-of-way of the West Rail Project. Do I hear motion to acknowledge report of counsel?
So moved.
Move by Commissioner Tomayo. Do I have a second by Commissioner Benavides? Any further discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Item carries. Item D, deliberation regarding real property concerning the possible lease of land at East La Blanca Park. Do I hear motion to direct our Parks Manager to develop an RFP for the providing of ICE services at East La Blanca Park? Move by Commissioner Gadsden, second by Commissioner Tomayo. Any further discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Item carries. Item E, confer with Commissioner's Court Legal Counsel concerning a claim of Timothy R. Floyd. Do I hear motion to acknowledge report of counsel?
So moved.
Move by Commissioner Wood. Do I have a second by Commissioner Gadsden? Any further discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Item carries. Item F, confer with Commissioner's Court Legal Counsel concerning Sun Guard BiTech Software Support Bill. Do I hear motion to acknowledge report of counsel?
So moved.
Move by Commissioner Tomayo. Do I have a second?
Second.
By Commissioner Wood. Any further discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Item carries. Item G, confer with Commissioner's Court Legal Counsel concerning Attorney General Opinion Number GA-0578 and concerning possible deck action with regard to the creation and funding of the four forty-fourth and four forty-fifth judicial courts. Do I hear motion to acknowledge report of counsel? Move by Commissioner Benavides, second by Commissioner Gadsden. Any further discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Item carries. Item thirty-one, budget amendments, line item transfers and/or salary schedules. Javier?
Judge and Commissioners, in your packets, it was included on the first page, a couple of departments' line item transfers within their departmental budgets. On the second page, and from, well, the second page, the first one is just increasing some fundings from some reimbursements to increase some rental equipment the tax office has to pay and then setting up the funding for various grants on the following two pages. The salary schedules attached to that relate to the grants. I also passed out another sheet, I left it on your desk, and a majority of what this is, is increasing funding for the increase in property insurance and windstorm coverage on various buildings. And on the last page of that one, it is to set up funding for the final payment for the Brownie Road Project, for the final invoices that the Parks Department has so they can close out that project.
Any questions?
Move to approve.
Move by Commissioner Wood. Do I have a second? By Commissioner Benavides. Any further discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Item carries. Item thirty-two, approval of claims. Any questions on claims?
No other questions?
No.
Move to approve.
Move by Commissioner Gadsden, second by Commissioner Tomayo. Any further discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Item carries. Item thirty-three, approval of minutes, October the ninth, two thousand and seven. Do I hear motion to approve the minutes? Move by Commissioner Gadsden, second by Commissioner Tomayo. Any further discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Item carries. Item carries. Item 34, consideration authorization to increase slot 04 from Budget 830654 by $5,122.
No.
Do you have any other comments here?
No.
Besides us here?
No. Move by Commissioner Benavides. Do I have a second? By Commissioner Tomayo. Any further discussion? All those in favor signify by?
I have a question.
Discussion.
On this particular slot change, Javier, is there any increase in, I know there's increase in responsibilities according to what you put on here? Because now it's a center director, right?
Correct.
Okay. So the individual that were taken here was, what was the previous position?
She was the assistant to the center director at Cameron Park.
Okay, so she becomes a director now?
Correct.
Okay. And we're not replacing the position at Cameron Park?
No. We just moved the whole slot over.
Okay. That's it.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Item carries. Item 35, discussion and possible action regarding the use of the warehouse behind the sheriff's office? Pete? Was that Javier? Javier, you might have just, this came up because we have some issues.
As the court may recall, this warehouse was constructed roughly seven years ago. Initially, it was going to be a records warehouse. Initially, it was constructed and it was used as a staging area for while they were doing some construction work there at that location. Then it was going to be a records warehouse. After that, um...
Staging area for what? How come I don't?
During the construction of the, the initial intent of it was, when they were constructing the sheriff's office and the jail, in order to store some of the equipment that they already had on hand, but there was delays, there was delays in the construction of it.
But this didn't come about till the Carrizales Record Complex was done already?
Well, it wasn't completed, but it had been discussed during the construction, but then there was delays in permitting and design with the city of Brownsville, because their requirements changed from when it was initially approved by the court. But the long and the short of it, it never was completed. It was, because initially it was going to be a records warehouse, then it was going to be a vehicle maintenance barn, and in the last drawings we have, it was going to be a jail. So the building has never been completed. When it was going to be a warehouse, the city had requirements that in the front, it had to have a brick facade on that one wall, a certain amount of landscaping, parking area, and also a restroom constructed inside of it. None of that has taken place. Right now, it's being used just for storage, but the facility itself isn't complete. So what we're looking for is direction from the court as to what the building is going to be used for, or who is it going to be assigned to, so that...
Who's storing what? What's storage? And let me ask you, before we get to that, have we ever been given a certificate of occupancy for that building?
No, we haven't.
Is there a need to? We need to get one?
If we're going to utilize it, we should have one, but as he's talking about, some of the issues that were agreed to by our previous engineer, like putting a brick facade on it, has never been done.
Right.
And from what I understand, in talking to the city, it was our county engineer who suggested that. And so it went into the plans, and that's what the city expects to be done. Plus, you're going to have the landscaping and parking, and those things normally go with it, and that hasn't been done. So it's never really been completed, although there have been from time to time things stored in it.
I don't think there are, I guess the sheriff is using it for some storage, cars and...
Presently, yes.
But there were previous storage items in it over the past years.
Yeah, prior to that.
Well, didn't we used to store some of Mr. Clark's stuff in there?
At one time, he had some of his items inside of it.
That was the first big storage, I think, that went into it.
Yeah, but if we don't have an occupancy certificate from the city, should we be storing anything in there?
Well...
Well, I think that's why it's here, because there is no certificate of occupancy. We've been using it.
We need to finish it.
Inappropriately.
As to what, what that final use is going to be.
Don't we have a plan to build some jail cells in there?
That's for the court to decide. I mean, like I said, we have three drawings.
Did we hire an architect?
Yes, we do have drawings for that.
I mean, is there somebody here from the sheriff's office, do, you know?
Yeah, I think as Javier mentioned, you know, we have plans, construction plans to convert it into a vehicle maintenance facility. We've got plans, the latest plan...
We've got like five sets of plans, Pete. We've got like five sets of plans.
Yeah, the latest one is to convert it into a jail.
Into a jail?
Yeah, and that was the latest one.
Couple millions on that one.
That was the latest one.
Or we spent, what, $380,000 on that?
More or less, yes.
Right, $380,000?
I'm not an architectural senior.
So what happened to that?
I guess, you know, the court needs to make a decision as to whether, you know, we want to fund that, but, you know, we're looking at anywhere from four to six million dollars to convert that into a jail.
And there how many beds?
I really don't recall. I think it was about 100, 120 beds.
Yeah.
We're going to do that.
But this is separate from the other, from the other project that Aguilera's working on, right?
Yes, and I was just going to say, if we're going to consider converting that into a jail, this is the time, because last week, we went before the Texas Commission Jail Standards. If y'all recall, the court had approved, or the recommendation of a waiver to go from the congregation of inmates in the dormitory areas and in the day areas, from 48 inmates to 64. That was unanimously approved by the Commission Jail Standards. So we're moving forward with a design of those 250-some-odd beds. And if y'all recall, we had a workshop, I believe during the summer, with the architect that did, Burnson Gill's, I think, that did the plans. We can utilize the segregation cells, or the separated cells, and we can get a waiver from the Texas Commission Jail Standards, I believe, if we include those on the beds that we're doing at Carrizales. So, you know, right now is the perfect time. If we're going to pursue that, then, you know, we can come back to the court with funding options on how to fund those additional beds and convert that facility into a jail. Except, I think, if I recall correctly, the estimate was anywhere from four to six million dollars. So if that's something the court wants to pursue, I can get with the sheriff, and I can get with the architect that designed the plans and come back to the court.
Yeah, but if the court spent $380,000 on developing plans, it would seem to me that that would have meant that that's the direction we were going in.
Well, we, we had a workshop, and, you know, we weren't given direction to do that, because at that time, we were still looking at Carrizales. And we all recall, our initial intent with Carrizales earlier during the summer was to upgrade the existing facility, and then after a meeting we had with the Texas Commission Jail Standards...
Is the tent operational right now?
Yes, it is, yes.
Let me ask you, why did, why did, why did we abandon the vehicle maintenance warehouse from that location? Just refresh my memory. Cost?
Yeah, we, when we did the plans, and then we did the cost, it was going to be, we had to go in there, because if we were going to utilize the facility for heavy equipment, we were going to have to go in and redo the base, the foundation of the building, and the cost, you know, was just enormous for us to be able to convert that.
Now, this agenda item? We're using it for some, currently, currently, I think we're using it for some storage of some equipment that the sheriff's office has control of.
That's correct.
What we may need to do is see if we can't get a temporary occupancy permit from the city in order to make it legal temporarily, but temporarily, we need to be able to tell the city when we're going to make it permanent, and give, if we're going to make it permanent, what we're going to do to get it permanent, which is landscaping, parking, the facade on it.
Let me just clarify something. I didn't have anything as background, so all I have is this agenda item.
That's all you got? There's nothing, there's nothing there?
There's nothing else. Okay, so are we being, I know that there were five, there's like five different plans.
Right.
And are they asking the court to decide which plan we want?
No. What I want to do is determine, I mean, I put the item on the agenda to find out what's the court, what does the court want to do with this warehouse? We've been, we've been occupying it illegally, so to speak, without, without an occupancy permit. So we need to get legal. I mean, we're breaking...
Well, does that mean that if we went in there, we did something illegally? Because I went in there to see what was there.
And I don't know, I mean, I don't know if the previous county engineer got a partial CO, or he got, he got some type of approval from the city to...
We, I guess we had checked with the city of Brownsville and see what's out there, and then, I mean, I don't think there, I think you indicated there may not be a CO.
That's what I understand.
We need to really check it out, see if there is, and then we have to determine what we want to do with that, with that facility. I don't know how, I don't recall how much money was spent on it, but it was quite a bit of money. $325,000.
Over $300,000.
$325,000 for a ware, for storage, for a warehouse, I mean, just ludicrous. And then we spent $380,000 on one set of plans for making a jail facility out of it. Right.
But keep in mind, we also spent money on, on a set of plans for vehicle maintenance facility.
As part of the master plan, I mean, I think it's what you indicated. Well, let me ask you, how much would it cost to reinforce this, to bring it back to vehicle maintenance? Was it cost prohibitive?
We can look, go back and look, I mean, we can do, I can go back and, I can go back and do a couple of things. One is give you the cost estimates to convert it into vehicle maintenance facility, and give you a cost estimate to convert it into a jail. And, and, you know, we can see how we could fund either of those.
We also need to know what it's going to cost if we're going to use it for some type of storage, and that's to comply with the city ordinances.
Yeah, but, you know, if, if that's a jail complex, if that's a sheriff department complex, then, you know, vehicle maintenance facility at that location might not be the best use for that. But, you know what, we can bring that to the court, and the court...
Yeah, because at some point in time, vast for vehicle maintenance was supposed to be when this master plan was developed, I don't know, I mean, years ago. I mean, so somewhere, it kind of got, got off track and...
Well, just the fact that we have five plans on the table should tell us something. But I'd like, I'd like, I'd like more information, well, I guess I'll...
Bring us more.
Yeah, for instance, I'm interested in getting some beds, you know, we, we're always crowded at the jail.
Well, why don't we do, and I think, and that's, that's the reason we put on the agenda, try to get some directions to what y'all want to do, because we are running kind of illegally out there with this, and I don't want to get cited or something, because, you know...
Well, they're not illegally went over there, because I, I went and I wanted to see that warehouse.
Okay, why don't we do, why don't you...
Wouldn't it stand to reason that if it's, if...
No, when I went in there, we're storing.
And the sheriff should have access to that. Why would we want to put a vehicle maintenance?
Well, that was the original plan. When we developed that complex, the original plans to have vehicle, that's why we bought on the acreage, the original plan, as I recall, was to put a vehicle maintenance...
I think the original plan also, and it was before all of our time, except you, you were here, it was, the original plan was to have some courts out there, to have engineering out there to consolidate a lot of the offices from the county, whereas that's changed over the years, where we had opportunities to, for example, buy the Levi building at a song.
Well, I think...
He fixed it up, and then we danced to the tune.
Well, obviously, that's not going to happen.
But we'll bring it back to the court, but then maybe another option for the court is just utilize it as a vehicle maintenance facility for the sheriff department.
That's a good idea. Look, once you come back and...
Give us a top two...
Yeah, I think that's a good idea.
Give us a top two priorities, as you see it, and whomever else you have to meet with.
Give us top 10, you know, like the Letterman Show.
Oh, David. No, I'm interested in seeing the vehicle maintenance, you thinking that, or jail, or jail.
Or storage, or jail. How about, Commissioner, would you like, maybe, you know, start off, if you can, go back down memory lane and, and, and kind of give us a chronology?
We'll be there till midnight.
Yeah, no, no, not until today. I mean, just real quick, like a, like a written synopsis as to...
A paper, should we do that?
Yeah, where we were, how it started, and how it's kind of developed over the years. You know, where we, the original intent, where we are with it today, and then what is the best use for it. Maybe we can use it for vehicle. Have you, where are y'all taking your vehicles to get serviced, because right now?
Yeah, San Bernardino.
Where?
San Bernardino, 510.
See, so, I mean, maybe you might want to, y'all, that may not be a bad idea, converting that strictly, let's say, a law enforcement vehicle maintenance shop.
And we also need a service center for precinct 1 and 2. The structures we have there are in pretty bad shape, as we all know, and I think some of those were to be in the master plan relocated out there to that acreage, because of the amount of acreage involved.
And Pete, just for the record, you were not county administrator when all this...
I was not, I was not county engineer.
You were not county administrator.
But Javier was there, right? So you should have a pretty good record of what transpired.
To find out something.
Yeah, it would be too difficult here to go back and...
I think it's even a great...
Javier, though, I think.